Hello and welcome to the Leona County Board of Commissioners District One and Two Candidate Forum. Hosted by the League of Women Voters of Leona County in partnership with the Leona Enterprise and Travers Area Community Media. My name is Tricia Denton and I am the President of the League of Women Voters of Leona County. Empowering voters, defending democracy, we strive for democracy where every person has the right, the desire, the knowledge, and the confidence to participate. The League of Women Voters is a national, nonpartisan political organization that for more than 100 years has encouraged the informed and active participation of citizens in their government. The League as an organization never endorses or opposes candidates or parties. We do make an effort to obtain factual information on ballot issues and candidates' views and share this information as widely as possible. We are very grateful to the candidates for participating in the process of informing voters through this forum. And a special thank you to our moderator, the Honorable Judge Mike Stepka, for volunteering his time to assist. Mike?
Hey, good evening, everybody. My name is Mike Stepka. I'm a judge in the eighty-sixth District Court of Leona County. I welcome our candidates and you, the voters, to this important community forum. The purpose of this election forum is to provide an opportunity for you to meet, learn about the qualifications, and hear the views of the candidates running for the positions of Leona County Commissioner in Districts One and Two. The District One candidates are Jamie Kramer and Rick Robbins. Both are present here tonight. District Two candidates are Don Gallagher and James O'Rourke. Don Gallagher is present. James O'Rourke has declined the offer to participate in the virtual candidate forum format. The format and guidelines are as follows. Questions for the forum have been submitted via email prior to this forum and screened for propriety, clarity, relevance, and duplication. To begin, each candidate will give a two-minute prepared opening statement. Then they will each have one minute to respond to a question previously submitted to them. Rotating who will speak first, the candidates will then respond to the questions that were submitted by email. Each candidate will have one minute to respond to each question. There will be no follow-up responses, but each candidate will be given two minutes for closing remarks once I've completed the time for questions. Okay, timing for answers begins when the candidate speaks. The meeting host will also notify when ten seconds remain by raising her hand in the screen and closing her hand when time is allowed. Okay. Now, each candidate again will have two minutes to give their opening statements. Point toss was conducted prior to get or to determine who will go first. So we will begin with District One candidates. And I forgetting who went first here. That was Jamie, right?
Mr. Robbins is up first.
Rick Robbins, District One candidate and sitting first. So, Rick?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Trish, for the Women's League voters for putting this on. Thank you for your time, Judge Stepka or Mike. Thank you, Don, for joining in with Jamie and I and for the first time meeting Jamie. Nice to meet you and okay, go from there. Well, first of all, I'm Rick Robbins. I am the current Commissioner for District One right now, running for reelection. I'm a Grand Travers Liam County native, grew up in Grand Travers, moved out to Leona County about twelve years ago. My career was law enforcement. I retired from Grand Travers County Sheriff's Department as Detective Sergeant in 2001. From there, I left to become Mr. Mom, and that led into two businesses. One is as a court officer doing legal services for all the courts and for the attorneys in town, evictions and serving the papers and seizing property. And then I also started another business where I do farm services for the local farmers, trucking and whatever services they need. I have three children, Taylor, she's a 2020 graduate from Olivet, Josie's a 2022 graduate from MSU, and I had a son, Brandon, who passed away last May. I'm looking forward for another term here. It seems like it just started and it's ending, and there's so much to learn in this job, and there's still a lot of stuff we have to do to finish up and more things going to be put on the table for us to talk about and work on. Thank you.
Hey. Thank you, Rick. Jamie Kramer, also a District One candidate, will go next.
Fantastic. Thank you, Judge Mike, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for allowing me to be here tonight. My name is Jamie Kramer and I am running for county commission for District One. And my background is kind of varied. I am originally from Meeseck, Michigan, which is just south of here. And I grew up, actually, not a very wealthy person, to a single mom. And then I went directly to New York City where I went to school and studied and lived in New York for a while, and I came back to Michigan quite some time ago and worked in media as a journalist at Seven and Four. And then I did morning show radio with Jack O'Malley for a number of years. And recently, I have just started my own business called Beyond Forest where we take cremated remains of people and actually put them right now, we just were working with a partnership with Sleeping Bear National Lakeshore. So in the Sleeping Bear National Lakeshore, and we're hoping to expand that to all national parks to give families an alternative at the end of life. And I'm very proud of that. I have two amazing children, one nine, Keegan, she goes to Leona Montessori, and the other is eighteen months. His name is Finley and an incredible husband who backs me up completely. I am super interested in this position in the county because I have been a liaison for years, seeking out expert advice, reporting on different things that are happening in our community. And I always believe that there are resources to help us and assist us in these things, and that's why I'm interested in running for county commission. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Jamie. And District Two candidate, Don Gallagher. Don?
Thank you, Mike. The Leon Enterprise, League of Women Voters, and those who submitted nice questions. My name is Don Gallagher, and I hope to represent District Two on the Leona Board of Commissioners. I'm a union electrician by trade and a farmer by choice. I lived in Leona County for close to forty years and hope to live for forty more. I've been married to my wife Colleen for thirty-nine years, now have three grown children and ten grandchildren. I believe I will make a very good candidate commissioner because of my common sense, my past experience. And I just, I'm a really good listener, and I look things through before I continue. Thank you.
If you, Dan. I think we go to Jamie, is that correct, Tricia?
We're gonna go to with the first question that was previously submitted.
The three priorities?
Yeah.
All right, Don, District Two candidate, what are your top three priorities for Leona County?
Thank you. Clean water, for sure. I think we've made a good decision on the septic ordinance. Natural resources, we have to keep open land, and if open land is developed, has to be done smartly. Broadband, because of the pandemic, we have to, you know, finish the broadband job and get everybody broadband. And of course, I'd like to try and keep taxes low. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now, Jamie?
Great. Thank you. So my three items that I'm really passionate about are, of course, water. We live in the water. We are surrounded by water. Much of our infrastructure and the way that we live is based off of tourism, which also includes water. So I think that's a really important topic. Also childcare. I am a living, breathing example of why we need childcare right now in Leona County, and I have multiple friends who have faced the difficulties surrounding getting not only affordable childcare, but just access to childcare in general. So that will definitely be one of the issues that I am advocating for. Also intentional growth, really looking at all of the players when it comes to how we grow and and move forward in the county. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Also District One, Rick Robbins. Rick?
Well, one of my first would be, as a commissioner, we have to maintain the budget and our county properties and make sure that they're balanced and that we're in budget and make sure that all the departments are funded and they can operate the way they're supposed to to represent the taxpayers of this county. Two would be the broadband. We've just started. We've still got a lot of work to do on that. There's areas that did not get covered. A lot of people don't realize that we still have a $1.8 million balance that we got to come up with to pay for this project that we've already started. The other ones is, you know, we got early childhood development. Millage will be coming up at the end of this, not this term now, but who's ever elected will have to be dealing with that for the next millage. You know, we also got the septic that we ordinance and the water that we've taken care of, but there's still more work that needs to be done. It just doesn't end with just getting into ordinance and moving on from there. It's going to be continual. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now for the email submitted questions. And Tricia, does Rick start with this?
Um, let's, let's let Jamie go first and be in the hot seat first this time.
Okay. Okay, so Jamie is District One. Here's the email question, Jamie. A large part of leadership and governance is relationship building. How would you characterize the level of civility, collaboration, respect, and nonpartisan cooperation among Board of Commissioner members? Do you believe there's need for improvement? And if so, what would you suggest to improve those relationships? And how would you work to bring more civility and bipartisanship to Board of Commissioner meetings?
Sure. Thanks, Mike. So, well, obviously, I mentioned earlier that I worked with Jack O'Malley for several years, and if anyone knows politics, we kind of are on the varying scale of those two worlds. But it's important to me to talk to people as if they're people. So when we're having a conversation, kind of really relationship building, as you mentioned, between two humans who have different varying views on things. Everyone has different likes and dislikes in this world. If we can't manage to find some common ground and then move forward in how we talk about the bigger issues, then I feel like then that's when the things start to crumble underneath us. First, you find that common ground, and then you build from there. So after that, then, you know, comes the issues and topics. So it is that relationship building that is foundational and fundamental. Thank you.
Thank you. And then, Don, Tricia?
Nope, we're gonna keep it in the District One and go with Rick.
Okay. What's, repeat the question one more time.
Sure. A large part of leadership and governance is relationship building. How would you characterize the level of civility, collaboration, respect, and nonpartisan cooperation among Board of Commissioner, Board of Commission Members? Do you believe there's need for improvement? And if so, what would you suggest to improve those relationships? How would you work more to bring civility and bipartisanship to Board of Commission?
Thank you. That was one of the things I talked about back in 2020. I knew then that there was a strain on the board between both parties, groups. I feel like my track record, I proved right from day one. First day, I, when we were doing the organization meeting, I saw how they were going to fund the health department or, you know, assign the health department, and I'd looked at how they were been doing it in the past, and it was always one party, one from each party. And first day, I just said, this isn't right, and I went against my party and did vote bipartisan. I voted bipartisan on the recycling up at the governmental center. Bipartisan on the septic. I feel it's very important. I think we've come a long ways. At first, the first year, it was a strain there, but I would say in the last five months, I've seen a working board. We're making headway, but there's room for improvement, a lot of improvement. So, I mean, just just last week, I worked with Patricia Sodas Little on the wage, wage increase for the employees. We need to see more of our bipartisan across the board from both sides.
Okay. Thank you, Rick. Just, you, Don, you'd like me to reread the question?
Oh, no, I think I got it.
Right.
I think first thing you do is start by listening and then find common ground and then go from there. And without missing the picture of what is good for Leona County. We have to make sure all our issues are good for all of Leona County. We may not agree on everything, but if we can just find common ground and build from there, I think that's the best way to go. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next question.
Now we're back to Rick, Jamie, and Don.
Okay, thank you, Tricia.
Yep.
Hey, Rick. Most votes at Commissioner meetings pass without opposition. In rare cases where there is disagreement, votes usually fall along party lines. How can you assure that all of your, pardon me, how can you assure all of your potential constituents that you will rep all residents in your district and not just those who are members of your party? Support a nonpartisan ballot for Board of Commissioner positions?
And I guess start off where I started with the last one. I feel like I have done a good job. I am a listener. I don't go in there. When I walk in that door, I don't know how I'm going to vote. I want to listen to all sides and make a decision on the issue, not on party line or how my fellow party members are going to vote. I want to be fair. I want to, you know, and I've gone out. You got to go out and I've talked to the other people on the other aisle. I mean, I'm not afraid to go out and make a phone call or track them down and see where they're coming from because biggest thing I've found, whether it's in my legal career or working with the courts, it's all about communication. A lot of times when you sit down and start talking to the other party, somewhere you'll find a happy medium and maybe understand where they're coming from. They understand where you're coming from, and you can come up with a solution that's best for, best for everyone.
Okay, thank you, Rick. Jamie, would you like me to reread the question?
If you wouldn't mind, just so I can get a little fresher.
Sure. Most votes at Commissioner meetings pass without opposition. In rare cases where there is disagreement, votes usually fall along party lines. How can you assure all of your potential constituents that you will represent all residents in your district and not just those who are members of your party? Would you support a nonpartisan ballot for Board of Commissioner positions also?
Uh, so I believe that facts are nonpartisan. I also believe the data is nonpartisan. And I think taking all of those things and especially the community itself into account while you're making these decisions is nonpartisan. It's doing what's better, best, using all of the information that you are given. And sometimes that is not going to follow a party line. It's just the best decision that you can make. So you consult people who are experts, you consult the community itself, and you take all of the information and you put it together and you make a vote, and that's what I intend on doing.
Okay, thank you. Don, District Two, would you like me to reread the question?
Please.
Most votes at Commissioner meetings pass without opposition. In rare cases where there is disagreement, votes usually fall along party lines. How can you assure all of your potential constituents that you will represent all residents in your district and not just those who are members of your party? And would you support a nonpartisan ballot for Board of Commissioner positions?
Um, yes, I would support that. I think that would leave a lot of issues at the door. But as far as on party lines, again, it might come into a meeting like when I was a trustee for Elmwood, but by the time we listened and hashed it out, you know, and we came up what's best for the people of Elmwood, in this instance, to be the people of Leona County, I will always vote that way, for what's ever good for the county. Thank you.
Okay, next question.
District Two is up with Don Gallagher and Jamie, then Rick.
Okay, District Two. Don, affordable housing continues to be a problem in our region and in Leona County. How do you believe, I'm sorry, what do you believe is the county's role in addressing this issue? How would this belief impact your actions as a commissioner?
I believe this question's been around for like thirty years, and I think it becomes more of an issue of, you know, maybe we do it. You know, I really don't know. I mean, I want to help, but we have to figure out, you know, I've wired habitat for, habitat for housing and stuff like that, but we have to figure out how we're going to do it, how we're going to fit it in budget. You know, if it isn't even a budget, budget issue, you know, if we have, we have land, but it's been, you know, maybe we need to see what's working in other counties, what they're doing, you know, don't be afraid to ask questions to how they're how they're handling it and stuff, and then go from there and figure out the best way forward. Thanks.
Hey, thank you, Don. All right, Jamie, do you want me to reread the question?
No, I think I've got it. So I'm going to second Don on this one about consulting other communities and maybe not even necessarily in the state, but really looking at like who has done affordable housing, workforce housing well, and how can we replicate that system within our county? Really focusing on, I mean, a lot of times I feel like we, we think that we're reinventing the wheel, but we're really not. I am almost certain that there is a place in the world that is, you know, maybe not completely figured this out, but at least gotten, hit some notes and gotten some things right. So my, as I always default to, you know, interviewing and talking to people who know more than we do and then just implementing and moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, District One, Rick, you want me to re-
No, no, that's okay. I haven't. First of all, we have to be a supporter of everybody, especially the private out there. They're the ones that are actually doing the work. I mean, they need our guidance and our support, but now you have Habitat Humanity. I volunteer for them now and then next week, hopefully, weather permitting. I've organized for our commissioners to go out there and work on the Maples Crossing project. We need to get more involved. We got John Gallagher, our treasurer, you got Trudy Gala. You know, between the Land Bank and Brownfield, they're working to find this land. So we can, these organizations can come in and maybe build some housing. But the serious problem we have here is in Leona County is the average sale last year in Leona County was 629,000. The median range was 599. So they're competing against high prices. I don't know where we're going to find the land. We need we need affordable housing out here. I mean, like the Realtor says, you know, maybe not just housing, maybe we need some developments, get some rentals in here, not just for the seasonal people, but for people to live here so they can raise their children, and maybe that'd be the first step to the American dream is to, you know, to get the house later on, at least start with maybe a rental up here would help.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we have Dean Kramer, District One. And then Rick Robbins and then Don Gallagher.
Okay. District One, what is your understanding of the county's financial position and what would your priorities be for the 2023 and 24 budget planning process?
Sure. Well, this is kind of something that I don't have a major grasp on yet as I'm not in the position. I was just kind of looking over the budget, actually, before we started doing this. And I mean, it looks sound. I was looking at the budget items that haven't yet been passed. I am not probably in the best position to speak on this yet without fully doing a deep dive into it. Yeah, I think that's what I'm going to default to right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey. Rick, District One, would you like me to reread the question?
It's about the budget for twenty-three, twenty-four?
Yes.
Okay. Well, first of all, Jamie, I was in that position two years ago, so.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I don't know.
No, twenty-three, twenty-four. I mean, we're trying to finish up twenty-two or, excuse me, twenty-three right now. Some of the things that may be on the agenda, you know, we're in the early stages. What are we going to do with the jail? Maybe we, you know, we're just exploring, you know, maybe making a juvenile set. We don't know. There's a lot of things. They always still have issues in the building with our heating system. Whether we're going to get that covered next year, I don't know. Those are probably our main things right now that we're, I can foresee right now, but, you know, being a county commissioner, who knows? Next month, who knows it's going to be on our plate. It changes every month. So, but those would be probably our two big things that I can foresee right now.
Rick, Don, District Two, would you like me to reread the question?
No, and again, it's something that I'm not going to have much knowledge on. Of course, you want to have a very secure budget and everything and make everything work. But I would have to look at that also, and I just haven't looked at it yet. I apologize, but that's the truth. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next question. Can I have the order, please, Tricia?
Oh, we're back to District One in the first position with Rick Robbins. Then Jamie, then Don.
Thank you. Rick, what is your understanding and position on the Benzy Leona District Health Department? Thank you. Um, Rick, what is your understanding and position on the Benzy, Leona, uh, District Health Department healthcare initiatives? Do you support these initiatives? Uh, what is your position on how to fund these initiatives? Please explain.
I've been a supporter. Yeah, anything that's come up with the health department, I do not sit on those boards. Um, so I only get the information. Unless it's, uh, on your agenda, I would support right now. I would support anything that, uh. Uh, they may have on the table. I mean, I first I'd have to listen to it and. And see what they wanted, you know, but, uh, I mean, one of the biggest things I see with the health department right now is we may. We need to start exploring down the road for, uh, for our building for them instead of piecemealing, having part of them rent here and part of them rent here. I mean. We need to look down ten-year plan maybe to build their facility right on our campus and. Uh, where it's convenient for everybody to come to one location.
Jamie, uh, District One, would you like the question reread?
Uh, no, I think I'm good. I, uh, I probably don't have a full grasp of, uh, what they actually need, but I did sit on a Zoom once with the Leonhard. Um, Benzy Health Department and recognized that they are really understaffed. Um, and it seems like they are spread super thin. So I think really like looking potentially at, you know. Uh, making some new hires or, or assisting them with the things that they need. There are so many things that they work on and are responsible for. So making sure that they have the resources. Um, to keep all of our, uh, county and, and, um, community members safe, I think is, uh, a really important. Thank you.
Yes. Uh, Don, District Two, would you like me to reread the question?
No, I, I got it too. Um, definitely agree with it a hundred percent. I would think, you know, resources are their big things and because they are, you know, as mentioned, stretched very thin. So as far as what, you know, Rick said about ten years down the road, maybe that'd be a plan that we need to start looking at. Pretty seriously because they, they do an awfully good job for what they have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next question. Um, order, please, Tricia.
District Two goes first and then we have, um, after Don, we have Jamie first up in District One and then followed by Rick Robbins.
Okay, so District Two, uh, Don, what is your position on the county, uh, government role in supporting improvement? Of mental health services? What measured, measures would you support or which you could not support?
Well, I mean, that mental health, it, mental health issue is a big, is a big problem, you know, everywhere. So I guess we'd have to start by saying, you know, seeing where, um, do we work with Munson? Do we, you know, how do we go about? Um, putting everything together to help people. And again, we'd have to look at, again, how we're going to do that. So I would think we'd have to hire some professionals to come in and describe to us the best way forward. To handle mental health issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Jamie, one?
Yeah, uh, uh, thank you. Um, uh, obviously, mental health is, um, a huge topic right now. Uh, because people are suffering, um, all over the place and we are, it's difficult to find any sort of help anywhere. Um, I know that the juvenile, uh, facilities have become an issue and I also think that that is a mental health issue. Before we start, you know. Putting places in the jail for kids, we should probably start looking at like the root causes of their issues. What we're seeing with like their parents, their home situation, their lives. Um, there are great facilities and, um, organizations that are already around the areas that are working on these things. So. Um, maybe bringing them in like community, mental health, um, and first potentially partnering, um, with like a multi-county. Um, endeavor to make sure that, that these people are taken care of, I think is of the utmost importance. Thank you. Sorry.
Uh, Rick, District One?
I feel it's a very serious issue. Uh, you know, coming out of COVID, uh, I think it's gotten worse. I know it has. Um, you look at the courts, you know. They're, they're filled with mental health issues. Our jails, our jails are busting out of seams because they don't have the staff to. Give the people the services they may need for this and, uh. It's, uh, very serious and, you know, we have, you know, right now we're combined with about ten different counties and. They, everybody just needs to come together and work as one and, you know, the, the mental health board that we're on, it's no different than up. At our commission meetings, I mean, it's turf wars. They're fighting back and forth and they just be bipartisan and work for the people. Maybe, just maybe we could put a dent in this.
Okay, thank you, Rick. Okay, next question.
We have, uh, District One is up again, uh, with, uh, Jamie Kramer going first and then Rick Robbins, followed by Don Gallagher.
So Jamie Kramer, uh, District One. Currently, the state of Michigan has a significant lack of appropriate out-of-home placements for juveniles within the court system. These placements could be foster home placements, treatment facilities and detention facilities. What options might you consider in your role as county commissioner?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, I really think that the detention facility should be like the last thing we're looking at. There are so many points where we could reach these kids before we put them in jail. And I think it's so important that we do because long-term it's going to save us money as a county. Um, and not only that, it's going to, you know, keep our, our county a safer place to live and a happier place. Um, I just spoke with a friend of mine who works at CMH, uh, this weekend. And he told me, he said, you know, it's not always, the majority of time, it's not the kids. The kids are being raised in, in really difficult homes. Um, and they're seeing abuse, neglect, and this is what we get. So like as a community, I think we need to find a way to rally together around them and give them the, the resources and the, um. The, the, the assistance that they need. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. So also District One, uh, Rick Robbins, do you want the question reread?
Yes, if you would, please.
Currently, the state of Michigan has a significant lack of appropriate out-of-home placements for juveniles within the court system. These placements could be foster home placements, treatment facilities and detention facilities. What options might you consider in your role as county commissioner?
Well, this issue started in about December of last year when, uh, Lansing lowered the age. Used to be a seventeen-year-old. Could be incarcerated. Now they're considered back being a juvenile. So. When there is a issue with them, they can't go to the jail. I mean, we're trying to figure that out in Leonhard County right now. Uh, we have a seventy-three-bed jail and we usually have maybe ten inmates in there if we're not housing off from other counties. But the problem is, is we would have to empty out that jail and have no. Uh, pop, regular population in there. Ju- juveniles have to be separate. And you're looking at staffing and everything and, uh, probably redoing the whole building to make it for juvenile facility. And when I talked to the courts today, I mean, we average about four to five cases a year, maybe two hundred and ten days a year at. Two hundred and fifty dollars a day and that's on the low end. So you're looking at fifty thousand dollars to house these juvies to another detention center around the state. Um, at fifty thousand dollars a year. I mean, it's, it's, it probably wouldn't justify to redo our whole system and we, for one, we don't know if we can do it. You know, sheriff has statutory duties to provide a jail. If we took the jail away, where would our inmates go? So there's a lot of roundtable going on right now between the courts and some of the board of commissioners and the sheriff department. Uh, so there's going to be plenty, it's going to be on the table for a while. It's no easy fix, but, uh, we're, we're, we have to deal with it.
Thank you, Rick. Uh, District Two, Don Gallagher, would you like me to reread the question?
No, sir, I haven't. Um, the, the company I used to work for, I used to work in prisons and one of them was down there. Uh, Flint and that housed kids from thirteen to eight, seventeen years old. And you, you just would not want your child there. It's unbelievable. But as far as this issue here. I believe it's like a state issue. We could get any help, but maybe. Counties around us, we get together and figure it out. I don't know how we would do it in our jail without completely separating it and. They had to be kept separate at all times. It would just be a very difficult thing to do. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Okay, next question. Start with Don, District Two, Tricia.
Uh, don't, we're back to, uh, District One with Rick Robbins going first, then Jamie Kramer, followed by District Two.
Thank you. So District One, uh, Rick Robbins, what is your understanding of the role? Of county senior services, the county senior services program? What, if anything about this program need change? What would your role as a commissioner be related to this issue?
As a commissioner, um, for the last two years, uh, seeing them from time to time on the agenda. Um, they're going to need a lot of support because if you look at Leonhard County, we have twenty-two thousand people, oh, that twenty-two thousand. Uh, forty-nine percent is over sixty. So the population's not getting any younger. It's only going to get older. I mean, the scary part of that is, um, our population under five years old, uh, under five years old is only five percent out of twenty-two thousand. So, uh. It shows that our, you know, our society here in Leonhard County is getting older and we're probably going to have to provide more services, but, uh. You know, right now I think it's going fine. Uh, April does a great job there with her staff and, uh. You know, we'll have to just see where it goes, but it's, you know, it's, we're going to have to stay on top of it. So it's only going to grow.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, Jamie, District One?
Thanks. Um, I, I think senior services in, um, a, it, within aging population such as Leila is essential. Um, I think we need to look at all the ways that we can, uh, service the population. Um. I go and visit my grandma every Sunday and, uh, she is definitely getting up there, but still living independently. Um, but she needs help and she needs help with a lot of different things. She relies on, um, the. I'm sorry, I'm forgetting the name of the, the program to, you know, to plow her out every weekend and, um. You know, obviously she's getting to an age where transportation is definitely something that we are going to have to look at. And this is for everyone. I mean, this is, as you get older, uh, certain things decline and, uh, we need to. Especially as Americans in general, take care of our seniors way better than we do. And I, I hope that I can bring more of that to Leonhard County. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, District Two, uh, Don Gallagher, would you like me to reread the question?
Uh, no, thank you. Yeah, as, as, as we pointed out, the aging population in Leonhard County. So we have to supply services or help, but, you know, sometimes it comes down to neighbors checking on neighbors. You know, you know, we know this older person lives there. Let's check, see how they're doing. You know, uh, Colleen and I take, uh, Ray Weber to church every Sunday morning. He's a hundred and one years old. He's, he's a World War II veteran. He's just amazing. So if people get to know older people. You know, but a lot of times, you know, with the services that are out there, but just neighbors checking on neighbors. It might be the best, best thing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next question.
Uh, District One, uh, starting with, I'm sorry, uh, District Two, starting with Don and then, um. District One with Jamie up first and then Rick.
Okay, thank you. So District Two, um, Don Gallagher, what is your position on the Leonhard County Early Childhood Milage? What do you believe is within the scope of your role as a potential commissioner regarding, uh, early childhood-related services?
I am, I am really sorry. I, I do not have an answer for that. If it came in front of me and, you know, with the information, I would definitely study it. And find out, but I don't want to try and give an answer on something I really don't know nothing about right now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Jamie, District One?
Sure. Uh, well, I'm going to try to answer the, the question to the best of my knowledge. Um. Uh, really, I, I think as a county commissioner, we're there to allocate resources, um, to, to programs and programming, I think. Um, so just looking at, uh. Different options as, as far as like how we can assist the various programs, um. That are pre-existing and what we could possibly do to, um, assist up and coming programs. Um, and I, that is probably within the, the scope of my knowledge, all that I can answer on right now, but thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, District One, uh, Rick Robbins?
I have to start off, uh, that was one hot potato that was thrown in my lap on January twenty-first was the early childhood development. I heard about it from both sides. Um, and it led up to September, about a year ago. Um, that was a millage that was passed by the people. Doesn't matter if it's passed by two votes or a hundred votes. It, it, it passed. And it was a hot topic and, uh. The board tried to lower that millage, um, and it filled the room. It filled the basement. And that's what I like about those type of things. I don't like the hot meetings, but when we fill that basement and we fill that room, we hear the people talk. And I watch commissioners, that's when they listen. And, uh. That meeting that night, uh, we came up with three motions and my motion was to give them two hundred thousand, but it also saved the taxpayers a hundred fifty-four thousand. Uh, for last, or this year. And surprise, we knew we'd probably get a four-three vote, but we got a seven-zero vote, which really surprised me. But in the end, I have to say, you know, I was a young commissioner. I've learned a lot. We should have never been in that position. The people passed that in two thousand nineteen, we should have never messed with it. Um, if, if they want to change, change it at the next millage.
We are, uh, still with District One, uh, but with Jamie getting first, uh, stab at the question. Followed by Rick Robbins and then on to District Two, Don Gallagher.
Okay, thank you. District One, Jamie Kramer. Nearly forty-five percent of Leonhard families are labeled as Alice families, asset limited, income constrained, employed. And are living in poverty. What has been your experience from working with low-income families and what? Suggestions do you have for the county's role in addressing this population?
Uh, well, I was one. Um. So working in the news, um, I also worked a lot on these various topics with different organizations. I think providing a comprehensive, uh. Either service or list of services or a way that people can access services through one portal. Um, and, and kind of really, uh, making sure that, that they know what's available. And then also identifying the weak points and the pain points that they have throughout the county and finding out how to allocate. Uh, different resources to build, um, those, those, uh, uh, specific places that, that don't exist. Um, and then, and then giving people a comprehensive, um, resource, whether it be online or in person. Of what's available, I think is key. Um, because a lot of times these resources exist. But there's, no one knows how to access them or they don't know that they're there. So I think information is definitely key. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jamie. Um, Rick Robbins, District One, do you want the question reread?
Um, go ahead, one more time, Mike, please.
Nearly forty-five percent of Leonhard families are labeled as Alice families, asset limited, income constrained, employed. And are living in poverty. What has been your experience in working with low-income families and what suggestions do you have for the county's role in addressing this population?
So I was working with the families. I deal with it every day as a court officer and it's getting worse every day. Uh, with the landlord tenant cases. I mean, last week, forty-three and more. uh, with the landlord tenant cases. I mean, last week, forty-three in one day. So I see it, I'm out there every day, it's on the street. In Lano County, um, we do have programs, we gotta network them better. We gotta probably, uh, a lot of people, we gotta show that it's okay for these people to come and ask for help. I think a lot of them are just, you know, they don't wanna be, you know, blacklisted or, you know, looked down on, uh. We just, uh, you know, we got a lot of, you know, we got Lano Christians Network up there, they're available. Uh, we do have programs for people with the laundromat in Sutton's Bay where they can get their laundry done. Uh, but we just probably, we have the programs, but we gotta get them out there and, uh, um, network it more with the, everybody, the churches, the whole community.
Okay, thank you. Okay, who, Don Gallagher, would you like the question reread?
No, I don't think so, Mike, thank you. But I think, you know, picking up where Rick said, it is a community thing. And the community has to come together to help people in need. And with the resources, with the food pantries, with clothes drives, with, oh, just, you know, just picking somebody up. I know it's getting worse, it's getting harder, now we're going into cold weather. So if they can find out where those programs are for heat and help, I think that's really gonna be a good start. So, thank you.
Thank you, Don. Okay, next question.
We're back to District One with Rick Robbins first, then Jamie Kramer, followed by District Two, Don Gallagher.
So District One, uh, Rick Robbins, please give an example of a significant challenge you've encountered in your public life that required you to agree to a compromise to resolve the challenge. How difficult was it for you to step back from your initial position and agree to a compromise?
I would say I would, uh, I could go back to the first day I took office and walked in there. Um, I was in the middle of COVID. I was caught in the middle between, uh, two aisles, um, I was on the mask wearing. And, uh, I, uh, I had my own personal beliefs, but I also know I, I'm a role model as a commissioner. I have to, this is what the guidelines were, so I went against, uh, my, uh, my party that, you know, during that time and I wore my mask and, uh, it was, you know, I had to compromise. I mean, I had my personal beliefs, but when I walked in that door, I had to compromise and do what was right for me as a commissioner and, uh, make everybody feel safe in that meeting.
Hey, thank you. Um, uh, Jamie Kramer, District One, would you like me to reread that?
No, I think I'm good. Um, compromise. Uh, I, I honestly, if anyone has made it, uh, to any point in life and hasn't compromised, uh, how did you do it? Uh, as a business owner, as a mom, um, that is what I'm constantly doing is making compromises, especially as a business owner, because you go out and you are attempting to accomplish one thing and then you realize, oh, there's all of these roadblocks, there's things that you have to, you know, it's all these moving pieces and you constantly are compromising and moving, uh, from your original idea into this, this kind of new hybrid, uh, thing that it becomes. And I, and I really think that, you know, working with the county commission is gonna be no different. You know, you have this set thing that you're very interested in accomplishing, but then there's gonna be things that, that, that change and mold and move that. And, um, so yeah, compromise. Woo-hoo.
Hey, uh, Don, uh, District Two, would you like me to reread the question?
No, no, Mike, thank you. Um, before I was elected as a trustee, there was a, we were trying to establish a new ordinance down in Elmwood Township. And the one that was coming out as a landowner, I didn't agree with it at all. So what we did is we called a, a meeting down at Nora's School. We had two meetings, landowners, there's one meeting and lake, lake owners, lake lot owners, the other one. And we, we, I started out every meeting saying, we're not here to cut down a planning commission, we're not here to name names. We're here to fix the problem because like you, I didn't go to the meetings. So the planning commission thought everything was good. So we, together as groups, we came together with what we'd like to see in the ordinance. And as far as my side, I didn't get as far as what I wanted for selling lots, but overall, it worked very well, you know, we, uh, we were very successful and we kept it nice and peaceful. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next question.
Uh, we're back to District Two with Don and then, um, District One, Jamie and District One, Rick Robbins.
Okay, so, uh, Don Gallagher, District Two. Um, the Great Lakes contain twenty percent of the world's fresh surface water. Eighty percent, eighty-six percent of Leona County is water. Do you believe that current policies provide adequate protection for county surface and groundwater resources? What do you believe falls within a county commissioner's responsibilities and jurisdiction for water protection?
Well, I would think, you know, we'd have to start with, you know, runoff water. Where's runoff water going and, and stuff? So the, of course, the septic system was a good start to protect it, but, I mean, that's a, boy, I don't know where I'd start with that. I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm drawing a blank. I just apologize. I, I, I'm good, thank you.
Fine, thank you.
I apologize.
That's okay. Um, Jamie, District One, do you want me to reread the question?
No, I think I, I've got it. Um, again, I, I believe we're allocating resources. So I think that we need to like, ta, we have a, an amazing group of people here in Northern Michigan who are working on these, uh, specific, uh, issues surrounding water. There's the watershed center, there's flow. So I think really taking, uh, their information and incorporating it into what we are looking at. Um, there, you know, there are studies that they have done, um, like, you know, Don was saying runoff. Like what are, what are we looking at for runoff? What are we looking at for farm runoff? What are, what, what are, what is it causing, you know, down the line? Invasives, how do we, how do we tackle invasive species? Um, all of these things, we don't need to reinvent the wheel here. We just need to bring in people who know more than we do and who, uh, who have the information readily available and just incorporate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, District One, Rick Robbins, do you want me to reread the question?
Yes, one more time, please.
The Great Lakes contain twenty percent of the world's surface, fresh surface water. Eighty-six percent of Leona County is water. Do you believe that current policies provide adequate protections for county surface and groundwater resources? What do you believe falls within a county commissioner's responsibilities and jurisdiction for water protection?
Well, we did start, uh, with the septic ordinance system last month. Our water, we do have, we got the drain commissioner, he's working on drain district to, uh, around the county to, uh, prevent the runoff. Uh, you got the extension, they're teaching farmers how to farm better, so, uh, we don't have the runoff like they used to, where they're losing land and crops and what have you. Um, as far as us as a commissioner, um, there's not much, you know, that we can do. I mean, we can oversee it, but, you know, it comes from, probably gonna come more from landscaping and even at the federal level, uh, um, but we're all gonna, it's, it's gonna take a group effort. We all have to work on it. You know, it's not just, uh, just the feds or the state, but, uh, you know, we've, we're working with, uh, Lake Lano, prevent the weeds there. It's just, you know, like I said, every, every year, something different. So it's a continuous, uh, journey here that we gotta stay on top of.
Okay, thank you. Next question.
We have, um, room for, uh, two more questions, I think, before we go to closing statements. Just to let our, um, snow, you're almost, you're nearing the finish line, hang in there. Um, and for this next question, uh, District One is up first with Jamie Kramer, then Rick Robbins, followed by District Two, Don Gallagher.
District One, um, Jamie Kramer. What is your understanding of the state mandated, mandated responsibilities of county government? And where do you stand on offering county services above those services mandated by the Constitution?
Hmm, gosh, I wish I could ask more questions about that question. Um, hmm, can you repeat it again? I might just decline on this, but we'll see if I can get it. Go ahead.
Uh, what is your understanding of the state mandated responsibilities of county government? And where, where do you stand on offering county services above those mandated by the state?
Oh, okay. Uh, so where do I stand on going above our mandated job, basically? Um, I mean, I think if there's a need and there's a community need, then we need to fill it. Um, I think it's our job, uh, I mean, I, I look at my job as a mom, you know? Uh, I probably have mandated responsibilities for my children, but every once in a while, I try to go above and beyond, um, those responsibilities because things are important. And I think when you're taking care of a community, you need to come in and, uh, sometimes, you know, just the mandates aren't enough. And, um, we also, I think like as a general rule, we need to start like looking at rules as frameworks, right? Like, and, and, uh, adjust accordingly because sometimes the thing that we absolutely need isn't just written. Sometimes we have to move around those things or, or through those things. Um, and I, I think that's one of these issues. So I hope I answered it appropriately. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, District One, Rick Robbins, you want the question reread?
Yes, please.
Is your understanding of the state mandated responsibilities of county government? And where do you stand on offering county services above those mandated by the state?
I guess one of the ones I can think of right off the top of my head is right now what we're dealing with, with the juveniles. That's a mandated and, you know, we're, we're stuck with it, but we gotta come up with something that fits our budget and we're still providing the services and, uh, you know, do the best we can, uh. Um, you know, we can probably do it at our county level up here, but I, I can see a lot of counties where, you know, when the state comes in and mandates and it's hard on their budget. Uh, we're probably fortunate, whatever mandate may come up that, you know, we do have the personnel and we will adjust to it and do whatever we need to do to make it work.
Okay, thank you, Rick. Um, District Two, Don Gallagher.
Well, I believe a mandate is the starting point. And if we need to go above that mandate for the health and safety and welfare of Leona County, I think we have to try to do it. You know, we have to try to meet all people's needs if we have to go above this. But I just, the mandate is definitely, we have to abide by it. But it, at some point, or we like see it, that's just a starting point. And I believe if we have to go over it for the greater good, I think we have, just have to do it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next question.
This is our last question before, uh, closing statements and we are, uh, with District One. Rick Robbins will go first, followed by Jamie Kramer and then, uh, Don Gallagher from District Two.
Okay, District One, um, Rick Robbins. Uh, describe your app, pardon me, I'll back up. Uh, describe your involvement in your local government and your past and present efforts to serve community.
Is it, uh, did you say, uh, past and present?
Yes.
Okay, uh, well, I can start with, uh, past, uh, back in the early two thousand, I was on the Parks Board at Grand Traverse. My involvement at, uh, Lano level has been, well, it's county commissioner and, um, the, did serve on the beta board till recently and, um, on the finance board and, uh, and just, uh, right now, just, uh, you know, being a county commissioner is my service to the county.
Okay, District One, Jamie Kramer.
Uh, yeah, can I, uh, just hear the, um, entirety of that? I do kinda understand the gist, but I wanted to just, there's a detail. Could you repeat it? Thank you.
Sure, um, right, involvement, local government and your past and present efforts to serve your community.
Okay, awesome. Um, well, I like, I feel like it, it became a problem. You could probably talk to my husband, um, like, we need to work for pay instead of just volunteering all the time. Um, so I created, uh, we planted eight hundred trees at the, um, after the twenty fifteen storm. So I coordinated an effort to do that. Um, we did bras for a cause, they used to, the host for them. Um, we, at the, uh, opera house, we used to have picnic at the opera where, um, we raised money for the opera house. Um, when the storm in Puerto Rico happened, we rallied, uh, the entire community to, uh, drop off goods at the, the open space and, and then distributed them on the island. Um, even right now, I'm trying to, um, attempt to change how we grieve and, and how our community comes together at the end of life. Um, so, uh, those are efforts that I am really passionate about. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Don Gallagher, District Two.
Um, from coaching Pop Warner football to being coordinator of baseball and softball for Elmwood Township, summer base, summer ball, uh, volunteering down at Saint Mary's Church and School for many, many functions to being on the planning commission for Elmwood Township and being elected as a trustee. It's, it was all satisfactory, you know? Um, since then, we've, you know, our biggest thing is like I mentioned, taking rate at church. The man is just amazing, but kinda since we planted the orchard and started the cherry farm, our time has been limited. We like to help out friends and neighbors, of course, if we can. You know, if somebody calls with a problem, we try to go, I try to go. But it's, it's all been satisfactory, you know, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, time for closing remarks, Tricia.
We have, uh, in reverse order of how we started. We will begin with District Two, Don Gallagher will give his closing, uh, statement comments first, followed by, uh, Jamie Kramer of District One and then Rick Robbins will get to go last.
Okay, so these are closing, argue, remarks from our candidates. Each candidate has two minutes, so we'll begin with District Two, candidate, uh, Don Gallagher. Don, your closing remarks, please.
Oh, that was fun. People ask me, why are you running for county commissioner? My answer is, much has been given to Colleen and I, to our ancestors, to our immediate family. We have been truly blessed, the opportunity to enjoy hard work, love of life and to farm this beautiful land, being chief among those. It has been said that to one who has much, has been given, that much is required. I'm running for District Two County Commissioner because it's time for me to give back. No needy, needy family or senior should have to consider cleaning crops from fields to put food on table. No essential worker should have to live in another county to work here. All aspects of health, safety and welfare of Leona County citizens could certainly be approved upon. I will not shy away from any questions, problems or issues from District Two or Leona County faces tonight or in the future. It'll, if elected, I will serve to the best of my ability so well that it might amaze some of my Republican family members. I thank you for allowing me to participate in tonight's event and the support of the voters in District Two. I look forward to serving distinction on the board of commissioners and hope to make Leona County more responsible to its residents' needs and also register to vote. And also, registered to vote, win or lose, I want a big turnout for midterms because then I know our democracy is working. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Don. District Two. District One, Jamie Kramer, your closing statement, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Judge Michael, and thank you, Tricia. And Don, thank you so much. And Rick, it's really nice to meet you, finally. I would just like to say that as probably, I think, the youngest person who might be running, I would like to have more people like myself who are in these positions. We are busy. We have kids. We have jobs. We have things going on, but we need to be represented. We need to not only be represented for us, but for our children. Because really, these, those are the people that we're making these decisions for. My business focuses on legacy. And what I really, really want is to make decisions that really can last. Because this, as I was out knocking door to door, I met a Detroit couple, couple who told me that they had no issues, that this place was perfect. And I think that we need to take that into account, too. We know it's not perfect. We know we need to improve on it. But there are, there is a lot of perfection here in Lelandau County. And I think we need to, to really focus in on that. Also, creativity, I'm really hoping, because I enjoy figuring out hard problems. I know that I'm not the person who knows all the things. I know that I'm not probably going to have all the answers. However, there are resources and there are people. I like to think of myself as a liaison who, who works with others to kind of bring them in at the right points and, and, and times. And, and so that's really what I'm hoping to bring to the county is a lot of other people who know more than I do to get the, the job done and to, to keep that Detroit couple in perfection. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jamie. Rick, also District One, closing statements.
First of all, I'd like to thank everyone that was involved tonight. Trish, Mike, Jamie, Don, it's been a great time. It's been a great two years. I've learned a lot. Learned a lot fast. I would like another term. I can tell the people that I will continue being the same Rick that shows up there. I will listen. I will be bipartisan. I will do what's best for the people. And like you say, it's been a great time. We got a lot of work ahead of us. Still got broadband, finish up, new administrators coming in. So we, we may be going in a different direction. Whoever that administrator may be. You know, I'd like to work on, maybe, you know, since we are, we do have an aging population up here. No one's ever looked at getting with the health people and maybe get a walk-in clinic at Lake Lelandau or Sutton's Bay. So our people don't have to drive to Muncie and wait six hours. There's just little things we got to work on. I want to close with, it's, I want to thank everybody, Don and Jamie. I want to say I was in your shoes. And if you guys are elected, I'm here to help you when you get, take office. And I'll help you any way I can to make it an easy transition. So thank you to everybody.
Thank you, Rick. Thank you, Rick. So Tricia, do you have some closing remarks?
I do. I, I just want to say how fortunate our community is to have individuals such as the candidates that we've heard from this evening that are willing to serve. We don't have any bad choices here tonight. And I hope no one takes that as an endorsement or opposition to any candidate. I just say it's gonna be a tough choice for our voters. In regard to your tough choice, I would encourage you all to check out votefor11.org. It's an online service. It is in, it includes an online nonpartisan voting guide of all the candidates that are running for office that have submitted answers to questions in their own words. You can also gather information on the proposals that will appear on your ballot and other need to know information, as was mentioned, like how do I register to vote? Where can I register to vote? Where do I vote? How can I vote? Whether you're needing to use an absentee ballot or voting in person. You can find out that and more at votefor11.org. Also expect to see in the next week or two, printed versions of the Vote for 11 Voter Guide at your local library and other businesses and locations who agree to let us distribute them. Recordings of this forum, in addition to forums on the ballot proposals, the Supreme Court justices are available online at l w v lelandau.org as well as Traverse Area Community Media on their Facebook page and will be broadcast on Spectrum Channel 189. Have a plan for voting and remember to vote in the November eighth general election. Democracy is not a spectator sport. It needs all of us participating to work. So, thank you again. Mike, do you have any last things that you'd like to share?
Yes, Tricia, thank you. So again, I'd like to end it tonight, District One, Rick Robbins and Jamie Kramer. District Two, Don Gallagher. So thanks very much for participating this evening. And thank you again to the Traverse Area Community, Community Media, the Lelandau Enterprise and the League of Women Voters of Lelandau County for making this forum possible. We thank you for taking the time, ladies and gentlemen, to listen and learn about your candidates. So, thank you very much and have a good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Bye. Thank you.